Good evening and welcome to the February 1st meeting of the West Sacramento Planning Commission. Tonight's agenda is available on the -- is it on? Test, test, test? Test, test. I'm sure they can't hear me. No, they can now. Good evening again and welcome to the February 1st meeting of the West Sacramento Planning Commission. Tonight's agenda is available on the counter over there along with request to speak cards. This is a reminder to everyone that request to speak cards should be completed and turned into the clerk to my right prior to the completion of any staff presentation. For those speakers wishing to speak on items not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of this commission, please write the item number on your card. All speakers will be limited to three minutes. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and televised, so all speakers in order to be recognized must be called on by the chair and come forward to the microphone. Speaking in public may cause some individuals to be uncomfortable, and so everyone is asked to be professional and respectful at all times. We will start this evening with a pledge of allegiance led by Mr. Harrison.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We will begin this evening with the general administrative function, item A, the swearing in of Planning Commission members.
Good evening. Mr. Harrison, if you could please stand with me, raise your right hand, and repeat after me. I, Ryan Harrison, do solemnly swear.
I, Ryan Harrison, do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution.
That I will support and defend the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I will take this obligation freely.
That I will take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Thank you and congratulations.
Well, welcome now Commissioner Harrison. We're very pleased to have you. Would you like to make any remarks before we continue on to item B?
Yes, please. Thank you. I am very excited to be a member of this commission, and I look forward to working with everyone here and doing the right thing for our great city of West Sacramento.
Great, thank you very much. Item B is election of Planning Commission Chair, Vice Chair, and Secretary. I'll call in Secretary Tilly to make some remarks, and I will also indicate that after we swear in a new Chair and Vice Chair, the incoming Chair will take the position of the seat and will do a little bit of musical chairs at that time.
Yes, thank you Chair Austin. This is always a fun time each, the beginning of our first meeting of each year where we do elect a Chair and Vice Chair and Secretary to serve the commission for this upcoming calendar year. There aren't set rules necessarily about becoming Chair or Vice Chair, but traditionally at the Planning Commission, they have given everyone an opportunity to be Chair as they sort of rotate through. There certainly has been times where Chairs have stayed on, depending on the circumstances, but that has always been the tradition, and I think, and as you stated tonight, whoever is elected Chair should, after we complete the voting, should then take over the meeting and then run it for the rest of the evening. So with that Chair Austin, please commence the nominations.
Great, so we will do Chair and vote on that, and then we'll do Vice Chair and vote on that. So at this time, I will entertain motions, either nominations of others or self-nominations for the position of Chair.
Madam Chair, first I would like to start by thanking you for your service in this past year. It's been an honor. I would like to nominate Commissioner Sternfels for Chair.
And Commissioner Sternfels, would you accept that nomination?
I would with a second.
Yeah, okay. Can I have a second? So I have a nomination from Commissioner Liebig and a second from Commissioner Vu.
Are there any other nominations?
Seeing none. So yes, thank you. Would you accept that nomination?
I would, thank you Chair.
Okay. So if we could do a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Castillo.
Aye.
Commissioner Liebig.
Aye.
Commissioner Vu.
Aye.
Commissioner Sternfels.
Aye.
Commissioner Harrison.
Aye.
And Commissioner Austin.
Aye.
Thank you.
The motion carries unanimously. Congratulations. And I'll give you a moment to say some remarks. I think we'll do Vice Chair first, and then we'll just, you can sit here and do all that fun stuff. So I'll at this time accept nominations for Vice Chair.
Chair, I'd like to nominate Commissioner Castillo for Vice Chair.
Thank you. I have a motion from Commissioner Sternfels.
Second.
And I have a second from Commissioner Harrison. Any other nominations? Seeing none, I would like to take a roll call vote.
Commissioner Harrison.
Aye.
Commissioner Vu.
Aye.
Commissioner Sternfels.
Aye.
Commissioner Castillo.
Aye.
Commissioner Liebig.
Aye.
And Commissioner Austin.
Aye.
Thank you.
And the motion also carries unanimously. Congratulations, Vice Chair Castillo. And then last but not least, we will do nominations for Planning Commission Secretary.
Madam Chair, I would like to nominate Mr. David Tilly to be Secretary, to continue on as Secretary.
Second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Liebig and a second from Chair Sternfels. Any other nominations? Are we sure?
Take self-nominations as well.
Not a popular position. We'll do a vote, please.
Commissioner Sternfels.
Aye.
Commissioner Liebig.
Aye.
Commissioner Castillo.
Aye.
Commissioner Vu.
Aye.
Commissioner Harrison.
Aye.
And Commissioner Austin.
Aye. Thank you.
And we have three newly seated folks, so I'd like to welcome the incoming Chair and Vice Chair to take their places.
So before we move on with item C, I just want to take a moment of personal privilege and also thank Commissioner Austin for her outstanding work as Chair last year. I think she did an excellent job, both leading the commission through difficult issues but also helping us have a good dialogue up here that helped us make the best decisions for our community, and really appreciate the expertise and leadership and listening skills she brought to the table as Chair. And my goal will be to do my best to do the same. With that, we will move on to item C, presentations by the public on matters not on the agenda within the jurisdiction of the commission. The commission is prohibited by law from discussing issues not on the agenda brought to them at this time. We do not have any request to speak cards in front of us at this moment, however, if there is someone in the audience who would like to request to speak, we'll entertain a moment for you to fill out the card if that is the case. I am not seeing any requests to speak at this time or anyone come forward, so we will go ahead and move on to item D, correspondence and staff communication from the Planning Commission Secretary, Mr. Tilly.
Yes, thank you Chair Sternfels. Congratulations to you and also Vice Chair Castillo, and thank you all for your continued faith in me as your secretary. I look forward to another good and busy year with the commission this year. You should have two items in front of you tonight. First is a memo from Kathy Allen regarding item number two. We are looking to change our, partially change our recommended action on that one, so we would like to revisit that when we get to that particular item. And then the other item to you is a map on the first side and then a Google Street View photo on the backside. This was submitted also regarding item number two as a matter of public comment tonight, and it's my understanding that the party that submitted this tonight will be speaking on that item when we get there.
Secretary Tilly, I apologize. That map will be disseminated during the public comment period.
Okay. Well, then you will be getting one. And then, and so with that, I'll close staff communications at this time.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mr. Tilly. With that, we will move on to item D, disclosure of ex parte communications. And given we have a new Commissioner tonight, I just want to review that Planning Commissioners at this time should disclose any communications they have had on the agenda items at this time. We prefer here at the commission to use as much description as possible to describe any communications we've had with either members of the public or applicants in an effort to be transparent with the community. So if you have had ex parte communications, please be sure to explain who they were with and any specific agenda items at that time. We'll go down the left line with Commissioner Liebig.
No.
Commissioner Harrison?
No. No communications?
Ms. Austin?
Yeah, actually, I had an introductory email with a member from the applicant team for item number two, but we have not connected. That's actually my fault, but yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Austin. Vice Chair Castillo?
None.
Very good. With that, we will take it to the consent agenda. We do have one item on the consent agenda tonight, the approval of the minutes from the December 7th, 2017 Commission meeting. Be happy to accept a motion.
I move to approve the minutes.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Austin, a second from Commissioner Vu. I would ask for a roll call vote on this item as I need to abstain.
Commissioner Liebig.
Aye.
Commissioner Harrison.
Aye.
Commissioner Vu.
Aye.
Commissioner Castillo.
Aye.
Commissioner Austin.
Aye.
And Commissioner Sternfels.
Abstain.
Thank you.
All right, with that, we will move on to our regular agenda. Item number two, we have a public hearing regarding the proposed conditional use permit for an outpatient opioid treatment center at 3990 Industrial Boulevard. And before I pass it on to Ms. Allen, I just do want to note that the staff recommendation on this item, as we have before us, is to, staff is requesting a continuance on this item to the February 15th Planning Commission meeting. With that, I will pass it on to Ms. Allen.
Good evening Chair Sternfels and members of the commission. This item is a use permit application for an outpatient opioid treatment center which would be located at 3990 Industrial Boulevard. That's in the business park zone, and it would be located in an existing building that's approximately 5,500 square feet in size on a parcel that's approximately 1.5 acres. The facility would provide medication-assisted treatment for opioid-dependent patients. They would also provide some other limited medical diagnostic treatments such as HIV tests, work with hepatitis C and tuberculosis, things like EKGs, et cetera. The patients would visit the clinic from either daily up to only once a month. The average is about 200 patients per day that would be seen at the clinic. They expect their total patient load would be approximately 400 people. The facility would be open seven days per week. The operating hours proposed are Monday through Friday, 6:00 a.m. to 2:30 p.m., and Saturdays and Sundays from 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. During preparation of the staff report for this item, we did receive some additional comments from the police department and the fire, police department and public works department, and this caused us to retool our staff report a little bit. As noted in the report, you'll notice we did try to address some of the concerns that came from those departments in the staff report. One item of clarification we want to make is in regards to the first item having to do with the construction of a second driveway on Enterprise. Some additional research has been done on that, and it may turn out that that is ultimately infeasible to do. We've discovered there is a petroleum pipeline that runs along the east side of Enterprise. We're not sure how deep that is in the ground, but it may prevent another driveway from being put there. Also, there is a rather large PG&E vault in the area where the driveway would have to go. We're not sure if it would be feasible to relocate that. The project applicant is here in the audience, ready to answer your questions on this project. As mentioned in the memo, we are requesting that the item after the public hearing be continued to a date certain, which we're asking to be February 15th. This concludes my presentation. Myself and Mr. Tilly would be happy to answer your questions, or as I said, the applicant is here to discuss the project in further detail. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. So at this time, I would like to proceed as if members of the commission have any questions for staff, we can take those before we open the public hearing, and then at that time we can open the public hearing, have a presentation from the applicant, and then also have presentations from members of the public. Does anyone have at this time questions for staff? Commissioner Liebig?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. Kathy, thank you for your presentation. You brought up the gas line along Enterprise. Just curious, is that one of the large gas lines, the Chevron, Kinder Morgan, or it is? Okay. I'm learning where that's going now. All right, thank you. That was it.
Yes, I'll have some questions for the applicant as well, but I would like to hear from public safety either before or after the applicant speaks about some of their review and discussion that they may have had about this item and what the implications
Good evening. My name is Rob Strange. I'm the Deputy Chief of the Police Department, and I can review briefly to answer your question some of our review that we've done to date. So we have reviewed the conditional use permit associated with this endeavor as well as the security plan. Additionally, outside of the applicant's paperwork that they've submitted, we've also worked with the Health and Human Services Department in reviewing the implications of opioid use, addiction, and overdose within the county and specifically within our city. Additionally, the information about Yolo County and specifically West Sacramento users of this service has also been explored, although we're waiting for more detail from Health and Human Services about that. And probably one of the most important things that we did learn is Core has been running a similar operation in Sacramento for many, many years, and our law enforcement partners at Sacramento Police Department actually have described them as a good business for them and not impactful for their operations in that area of the city, which I believe is in Midtown. The concerns that we do have actually are very well expressed in the report that's presented to you tonight. They really lie strictly at this point with traffic engineering, and so at this point, we do not perceive, from the law enforcement side of public safety, we do not perceive any reasons that we should be concerned about this business.
I really appreciate your presentation. Thank you.
Absolutely.
I have a question maybe Mr. Tilly or the staff can answer. Not necessarily for law enforcement, but in terms of, I mean, I understand there's one entrance and one exit on Industrial. Has there been conversations, discussions with the fire department or our first responders in case there is need for emergency access?
The fire department was involved in a meeting that we had with the applicants earlier on in the process. They have had really no comments in regards to this project.
So just to clarify, so no comment meaning no concerns, or just they haven't yet analyzed it fully?
They had, they sent us a memo saying they had no comments on the project, so.
Unless anyone else has any questions for city staff, we will go ahead and open up the public hearing, and we will start with the applicant. If you'd like to come up and state your name for the record and provide any presentation you have for us this evening.
Thank you Chair Sternfels. Brian Holloway, Holloway Land Company, representing Core Medical Clinic. First of all, I'd like to take a moment and thank your staff Kathy Allen for a great job in processing our use permit and getting us to your, to your Planning Commission within a very timely manner, something that I'm not used to working a lot in Sacramento. So very pleased with the time that she was able to get us through her review and here. We have our entire team here to answer your questions. Garrett and Marshall Stenson are the Core Program Directors, and Dr. Stenson, Sr. is the Medical Director of the Core in Sacramento and would be the Core here in West Sacramento. Dan Erickson, our project architect, is here to answer any questions about the site and the building and anything internal to that. As Kathy mentioned, the site is an industrial neighborhood on a signalized corner on a bus line with a bus stop adjacent to the property. It's an existing building that will be adding parking for a total of 24 spaces. We'll be adding landscaping and potentially an additional driveway that Planning and the police department have suggested we take a serious look at. And we have an exhibit here somewhere, I'm not sure if it's going to be electronic or handed out? Okay, good. The project will provide Yolo County and West Sacramento with its only opioid treatment facility, where now patients have to travel out of county primarily to Sacramento. But unfortunately, after October 1st of this year, Medi-Cal will not let any county patients, Yolo County patients included, seek treatment outside of their county of residence. So without this clinic, they would not be able to attend treatment in Sacramento or elsewhere, and basically would have no options for treatment here in the county without this particular project. As Kathy mentioned, we anticipate about 200 visitors a day, potentially up to 400 existing Core facility in Midtown Sacramento on a very busy corner at 21st and Capitol sees up to 800 a day. They have a very quick check-in and dispensing that takes about one to five minutes unless they happen to be scheduled for counseling, and then they'll be there for approximately 30 minutes or so. Like our Midtown location, which has been operating without incident, and very important, without incident since the mid-1980s, we expect about 60% of our patients to arrive by car, 25% by public transit, and about 15% walking or biking. We will have a transport van that will bring patients to and from the facility about twice a day. The management, as you see in the handout that you have before you, have a very substantial security management plan that they will implement here, and one of the things that's important is that they're very, very focused on no one is allowed to loiter at the site or in the neighborhood. We anticipate about 20 employees will be hired, including physicians, licensed vocational nurses, nurse practitioners, counselors, and office staff. Core patients receive detoxification, one-on-one, and group counseling, along with regular drug testing and their doses of non-addicting medications. As they recover, and Kathy mentioned this, as they recover, they will go from a once-a-day visit to up to once a month, so that will lower the number of visits by the patients as they proceed through their treatment. We've all heard about the opiate epidemic that has expanded nationwide, and unfortunately, Yolo County is no exception. Presently, the Core facility in Sacramento sees 106 patients in Sacramento from Yolo County, and 68% of those patients live in West Sacramento. In your handout are three letters of support and a Yolo County Health and Human Services data sheet, actually many data sheets on the need for this facility and the need for treatment in Yolo County. And one other thing is the President of the Midtown Neighborhood Association is here, Angela Tillotson, is here to talk to you about how Core, what she perceives and what her neighbors and her association perceive as Core as their neighbor. And we are ready for your questions, and I think what we'll probably end up doing is having the program manager and the architect come up with me so that we're not hopping up and down depending upon the topic of your question. So we're ready.
So Mr. Holloway, thank you for your presentation. I think what I'd like to do with this, if it's okay with you at this time, is have you complete your presentation. We'll take questions, comments from the public, and then we'll kind of reconvene and maybe call you back up for questions based on the discussion.
I'm done. Thank you.
With that, we do have two requests to speak this evening, and they were handed in no specific order. The first is Ms. Angela Tillotson. As you're coming up, the mic should be on. If you could please state your name for the record, and we give everyone about three minutes to speak here, so we'll keep you on track.
Good evening Chair Sternfels, I hope I said that correctly, and members of the commission. My name is Angela Tillotson, and I am the Chair of the Midtown Neighborhood Association in Midtown Sacramento. Our boundaries are from J Street to R Street and from 15th Street to 29th Street. We have more than 100 members in our association, and we have a 15-member board. Of our 15 board members, Marshall Stenson, who's one of their directors, serves on our board and- board and has served for the last two years. And I think you received a handout. This little grid that is here, the larger rectangle is our boundaries, and the smaller one is a three-block radius of their facility. And all of those little dots represent our board members who live within those three blocks of their facility. And you'll see we have two that are a little farther out and one that's right on the boundary. So when Marshall first came to us and said that they were looking to open another location, our board discussed it and voted unanimously to write a letter of support. I also want to say that previous generations going way back, there are sometimes some of the previous board members from 20 years ago, and the new board don't always agree on some issues that the community is facing. But they have said, the one thing that we always agree on is that Core is a model for a service provider in the community. The other, so our association supports them, but I'm in an interesting position in that I live truly next door. Midtown is a mixed-use community, and this little picture right here, the first two buildings are the Core Clinic, and this little circled building is the apartment complex that I not only live in, I also manage. And the arrow is my townhouse. So there literally is about eight feet distance between our building and the Core building. And I can tell you, I've lived there for about five and a half years, and I've been the manager for about four, and I have had no complaints. They have been an outstanding neighbor. So most people cringe kind of if they were to think about living next door to a methadone clinic. I'll tell you what, I have no complaints. They have been amazing. And in addition, we have 12 units that I'm in our property with an average of about 15 tenants at any time. In the time that I've been manager the last four years or so, I have had no complaints from any of my tenants either. So I was surprised to hear the high volume of patients that they see because nobody, they don't, nobody loiters in front of our building. Is that my time set?
Yeah, we'll give you a second to wrap up your comments.
Okay, nobody loiters, and you, it's no more so than what you might see going into or out of a coffee shop or a grocery store or anything like that. So I'm just here to let you know, as somebody who pretty much is right there, that they're fantastic. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
I have a question.
Yes.
Have you observed any incidents of armed robbery during your time?
No.
Okay.
And, no. Their patients are always very respectful. I have no issues with them, and I attribute a lot of that to them for their expectations of their patients.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Tilletson. The second request to speak card was Ms. Gaben, or Gavin. Gavin, apologies. If you could start introducing yourself, and then we'll give you three minutes from there.
Absolutely. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Sarah Gavin. I am the Behavioral Health Director at Communicare Health Centers. We are a federally qualified health center right here in West Sacramento, and we provide primary care services, dental, behavioral health, substance use services, and we've been in the community, serving community members for 45 years. And we have seen in our community, similar in other communities across the nation, a rise in individuals who are dependent on opiates and opioids and seen the devastating impact of the individual, their family, the community. And we are really excited and encouraged to partner with Core Medical on the effort in providing enhanced treatment options and evidence-based medication for our community. We are partnering with a grant and a model called the Hub and Spoke Model, and this is funded by the Department of Healthcare Services. This is a model that was implemented in Vermont, and the outcomes of this model really showed that there was a decrease in deaths and overdose as a result of individuals getting the care that they need and the medications that they need to serve their, treat their addiction. And so part of this model is for opiate treatment program to be in the community, and we do not have one yet, in partnership with other healthcare providers, federally qualified health centers like Communicare, to provide a safety net and access to much-needed medication in a time, in a very timely way. And also, this grant funds medication for the uninsured, so people that wouldn't be able to access care. And so we're excited to partner with them. We're really encouraged they're going to be in the community and looking forward to working with them, so I'm here to show our support for them. Do you have any questions for me?
Thank you very much, Ms. Gavin. So that concludes the requests to speak from the public at this time. We'll turn it back to the Commission for both questions of either the applicant or city staff based on the presentation, and then discussion. This time, I'd like to start on my right with Ms. Austin.
Yes, thank you very much. Thank you very much for your presentation. I'll share with you a couple of the thoughts that I had when I was reviewing the staff report. I was perplexed that there was not as much information as I would have liked to have, but I'm pleased to see that between the applicant and the staff, we have a lot more information. I want to make sure that this information is going to be available publicly, and I can follow up with the clerk after the meeting. I see head nodding, so there's an acknowledgement that the documents that we've received on the Commission will be made available to the public, which include the letters of support. So one of my questions going into the staff report was about why this site and why this city. To be perfectly honest, I'm still trying to figure out where folks will be coming from. I am pleased that there is information about how there's a very high proportion of, it appears to be current patients who are from West Sacramento. However, if you're contemplating having 200 people a day and possibly 400 patients, a 400-patient load, it would seem to me that they are coming from outside of our community. And I'd also like to have a lot more information about the shuttle service. Where will those outpatient patients be coming from, do you anticipate? So if you could provide some more information? And then the last question that I have is, what other sites were considered? From my estimation, and it's affirmed by some of the maps that have been provided, my understanding is that there is quite a significant amount of opioid abuse and addiction of people who are Medi-Cal, who have Medi-Cal coverage in the unincorporated areas of Yolo County. And we are on the far eastern end of the county, so I wonder why we, there have not necessarily been a site selected that was more centrally located. Thank you.
So let me take a stab at the first question, why this location? Well, obviously, the concentration of opioid-addicted patients are in Yolo County and West Sacramento. The problem is going to be that come October, there are no patients in Yolo County are going to be able to go to Sacramento for treatment, so they're going to be on the street. This location, you know, Core works, operates a great program that's high-volume patients on a busy intersection in Midtown Sacramento where you've got houses and businesses all around it. So it's a good location, but if you're going to locate a scary use like this, that some people consider a scary use, the more concentrated, the neighborhood, the number of residents, the more people are going to worry. So this particular site has some advantages. It's on big streets. It's on streets that don't have kids going back and forth to school. It doesn't, it's not a commute street. It's on a, but it's on a busy corner, but it's an industrial corner, and it's a signalized corner on a bus line with a bus stop. Those are hard to find. And so basically, you've got an opportunity where you can put a use that some people might worry about at a location that has adequate street access, vehicular access. It has good bus access for the patients. It's not in an area near a school or near a park or near a church. So it works for the number of patients who would come, but it also doesn't, it's not locate, it's located in an area where the patients are going to be kind of located, you know, in this general community. And it's in a location where you wouldn't normally see lots of neighbors and lots of businesses here filling the audience, wanting to know what this is and how is it going to impact them. The thing that's nice is we've got a location that doesn't generate that kind of concern, that functions well, and it obviously functions well in a much more intensive, much more dense kind of neighborhood. So it has all the advantages except for generating lots of opposition.
Great, thank you. And then can you address where you anticipate that are patients coming from, including the van shuttles?
Garrett can answer. Well, so.
So as far as the van, we partnered with Adult Day Reporting Center, which serves clients, early-release prisoners, nonviolent prisoners, and provides them life skills training. They're down the street on, I believe, 3690 Industrials. We've partnered with them, and part of this grant that we received through DHCS has that written into it, where we're going to have a shared van service that will travel to Woodland, to Davis, to Triangle Court, and transport patients to and from the facility.
Great, thank you very much.
Garrett, a quick, talk about the partnership with Communicare. We want to issue a case. Yep, come speak into the microphone.
So part of this is, as we mentioned, a hub-and-spoke grant. Another key part that hasn't been mentioned, too, in order for Yolo County to opt into the Drug Medi-Cal waiver, it has to have a NTP, a narcotic treatment program such as ours, within the county limits. They're ineligible for the waiver, basically, so it's critical for the county. So this will also help not just your opiate addicts, but this will also help your methamphetine addicts and other people addicted to other drugs in residential settings and outpatient settings because it expands their services and their abilities to treat individuals for longer and treat more individuals. The point you wanted me to make was?
Just that, so Woodland patients can.
Oh, okay, so the hub-and-spoke model is basically, the hub is considered the narcotic treatment program, and the spokes would be Communicare and their facilities located in Davis, Woodland, and West Sacramento. So once they're stabilized, if they're traveling or commuting from Davis or Woodland and we have them stabilized, we can transfer them, their care back to their city of residence so they don't have to travel back and forth, if that makes sense.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Austin. Vice Chair Castillo?
Sure, thanks for the presentation, for the background information on the project. I think there's a lot of new information that we got tonight that I haven't been able to review, but I do have a couple of questions in terms of, so the parking situation is obviously a concern, as I said in the report. It states that there's 30 parking stalls. Another report states that there's 18 staff members, but you state there's 20, which leaves 10 parking spaces. Out of those 10, are there any disabled parking that's required as part of that? So that leaves.
Yeah, we have two ADA spaces.
So that would leave eight spaces. That would leave eight spaces for the general public or the 200 per day that you expect to see, obviously, using various modes of transportation. Can you just talk a little bit about, I guess, the parking situation? I know there's going to be more analysis done by staff, working in partnership with you guys, but can you address some of those concerns as it relates to parking? And then also, in connection to that, maybe compare to, I'm curious how the parking situation works in downtown. There's probably a lot of street parking, but there's probably a lot of parking lots that are, that people can use. So the difference between both?
Yeah, at the Midtown facility, which it more than doubled, more than doubled the number of patients, there's no parking. It's all on-street parking. And so the, you have 30 spots at the Midtown? Okay, I apologize, 30 spots in Midtown. But the visits are so quick that people arrive, they're in, they check in, they get their meds, and then they're mostly gone. And the nice thing is, is that as they progress through their treatment, as I mentioned before, then their visits are much, much less frequent.
And then just to follow up on the parking, is, I've driven by the side, but I'm not, I don't recall, is there street parking around this particular property?
There's not street parking on Industrial.
Okay. And then in terms of the shuttle, just to follow up with what Commissioner Austin says, so is that shuttle going to be running all day and in various points, or is it just in the mornings or in the evening or later?
It'll be twice a day. It'll make kind of a loop and then run back around, so one in the morning and one in the afternoon.
Okay.
The number of the hours are 6:00 to 2:30.
Right, okay. And then just in terms of the number of patients or individuals that you'd see, you state 200 per day on average.
So that would be kind of, so what we wanted to do, we wanted to kind of give you guys maximum numbers and worst-case scenario as far as patient flow. So our current facility, we treat over 800 patients. This facility, we currently have, I think, 106 patients that will immediately transfer to the Yolo County facility, and we will slowly, we can admit up to three to four people a day, so it'll be a slow trickle, so to speak, to get up to that 400 caseload. It may be several years before we get there. So the first year, you know, we're projecting to treat 150 to 200, and then add potentially 50 patients a year after that. So it will take significant time to get up to the 400 patient load.
So in terms of parking, I guess, parking wouldn't be?
So currently, in our Midtown, we have, like I said, we have 800 patients. We have 30 parking spots. We have 24 staff members that utilize those spots, which leave six spots for patients, including some limited street parking as well.
Okay, thank you. That's it for now. Very good. Commissioner leaving?
And Marshall just mentioned to me that they're now, he corrected me, they're looking at between 16 and 18 employees, so down a little bit.
Thank you, Mr. Holloway. I heard a question from, not Chair Austin, sorry, Commissioner Austin, and I have the same question. What is the county patient load for Yolo County currently? Is it 106?
That's my understanding.
Those are ones, those are Yolo County residents receiving services at our Midtown Sacramento facility. There's also another clinic that's another, I guess, competitor of ours that's off Norwood Boulevard, off Highway 80, that also has a significant amount of Yolo County patients that they'll have to receive. And just to explain this, the change in the Drug Medi-Cal waiver creates a county-of-residence model versus currently, there's a county-of-service model. So that will change, and all residents will have to receive services within their own county going forward.
So roughly, Yolo County double, double the 106?
So yeah, you know, again, I think those people will transfer over, the ones from the BART clinic will also transfer over, and that will probably be, you know, how we will start. And then we will start building up existing, you know, admitting patients that don't currently have access to services.
Okay.
Does that answer the question?
Roughly. I just, you know, I just have a question of like, what is the county load? If we're, if the county needs a treatment facility within the county, really, what is the patient need? Or patient demand, I should say.
Yeah, and our estimates, again, include getting up to 400, and again, working with Communicare and transferring, stabilizing patients and then moving them back and forth, back to their home cities.
Okay.
And remember, there's a, who knows how many patient, who knows how many opiate-addicted folks there are in the county that are not receiving treatment yet? So there's, you know, that's part of the demand. There's demand that's being serviced, you know, in the other two Sacramento locations, but there's also the slug of patients that aren't seeking treatment yet.
I'm Dr. Stenson, the medical director, and I thought I might make a comment about the frequency issue, too, because there's a mix of patients, and some of the patients are receiving a medication that the FDA has recently approved in the last 13, 14 years that is a much safer medication that can be, after a person is stabilized, usually it takes one to two weeks, we can give them a one-month prescription if they're doing well in treatment and following up in their counseling. So that subset will not be coming on a daily basis. They would be coming, you know, either two weeks to three weeks and then monthly. There's another medication that we are using that's a blocker, an opiate blocker, that's a once-a-month injection. And individuals that would choose that option for treatment would, once they are stable and doing well in their treatment, would just have to come once a month for that injection. And that blocks any heroin or other opiate that they might want to abuse. So that would be another, that's a small subset. It's kind of a, it's a newer intervention, but it's kind of growing in the public's awareness, and we're having more conversations about that. So that subset of population would be like a once-a-month after they were stabilized. And then on our methadone patients, which are the ones that constitute the more regular attendance, they work up takeouts. And one of the things, I think, part of our experience in having been working in the field as long as we have, we coordinate with our dispensing staff cycles so that as individuals gain more takeout privileges, that the, once a week, individuals could be divided up to Monday, another group on Tuesday, another group on Wednesday, another group on Thursday. So that's another reason that how we handle the flow with the relatively few parking spaces that we have.
Also, just to address the medications that we use, we used, two different medications have been mentioned, methadone and buprenorphine. So with opiate addicts, when the opiates are removed, or they don't have access to opiates, they go through an intense physical withdrawal symptom, withdrawal syndrome that in court, you know, includes profusely sweating, throwing up, nausea, bone and muscle aches, basically every, your constipation or diarrhea, few and far in between, so it is very, and the physical aspects of the withdrawal syndrome are very taxing on the body. So patients usually will do, you know, whatever they can to access opiates. And so usually, our heroin addicts are, you know, on the streets, trying to scratch $40 to $60 a day to continue their habit to avoid that physical withdrawal syndrome. The two medications we use have kind of three benefits, is they stabilize the withdrawal syndrome, so you don't experience those withdrawals, it provides a blocking effect, so if they were to relapse and use heroin or other opiates, they wouldn't feel the euphoria. So basically, they learn pretty quick, hey, I just spent $40 to $60 on something that I didn't feel at all. So they learn pretty fast to keep their money in their wallet as they're not getting any effect. And the third benefit is it eliminates the intense drug cravings for opiates. So just wanted to give you a little background on the medications.
Mr. Levy, we'll go back to you for questions.
Okay, thank you. I will say, I appreciate the additional information that came tonight. I did have quite a few questions. One of the questions I had was whether or not this was a new business. So it's nice to see that there is an existing business, business structure, business model with, I'm assuming, staff that would transfer over, but this gets to my question, the business would have 15 new staff, 12 of which are on-site. And so, is this an entirely new business, or what will be the oversight from the existing business structure?
So, some of the administration is going to come over, some of the leadership, the medical director, one of our current doctors will become the medical director at this new facility, and then we are going to move a couple of our experienced counselors over in the beginning. So we will have a small subset of existing employees moving over, but we'll also hire, you know, several other positions locally.
All right, thank you. That's actually, that's good to know. As you mentioned, kind of a scary business, a scary business starting with an unknown provider and brand-new staff makes it a very scary business. So I do appreciate that additional information, as well as, if anything can cause me to be more relaxed about locating the business, where you chose the site, that's probably one of the few places I could think of that wouldn't cause as many conflicts as if you were anywhere near residential. So I do appreciate that, as well as I understand the need within our county, as well as the general service area, for opioid addiction treatment. So those are my, those are my biggest questions. I will continue to go through the documents that you've provided for the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Levy. Commissioner Harrison?
Yes, I have some questions, and I want to preface it with a statement. You know, I came here telling myself I'm just going to kind of sit back and watch how things go so I can learn the process, but I have a, I perceive a serious issue regarding safety. And for the same reasons why it might be a good decision to place this business kind of on the outskirts, I see a potential issue with regard to theft. And I asked that question about armed robbery earlier. You know, I am a former dignitary protection law enforcement officer, and I have conducted numerous advanced threat assessments. And what I see here is a opioid dispensary located right near a freeway with access using a main thoroughfare, you know, literally like, right there on the freeway, and an unarmed security guard that only works on weekends and holidays. And I'd just like to know what kind of thought process went into that, and, you know, just help me?
Mainly based on our past experience, as we said, we currently operate a facility with 800 patients down midtown. We have the same model, we only have a security guard on the weekends. You know, there's high-traffic downtown and midtown concentration, study after study's been done on a national level regarding these medications and you being able to safe-to-drive while utilizing these medications, and the doctor can speak a little more to that.
And we also, you know, we have security cameras around the dispensary, and the dispensary is tied in with an alarm system directly to the police. We have also surveillance, outside surveillance. To kind of address the longevity issue, the clinic that we work at now was my first job when I graduated from UC Davis in 1972. So I worked there in 1973 as my first job. And over these many, many years of having affiliation with that site, I can think of one attempted armed robbery that turned out it was a very new, as I recall, don't quote me on this, but it was a very new patient of ours, and he pulled a stocking, one of the old hose stockings over his head, and came in, and it was, he completely bungled the whole thing, and he was disclosed immediately as to who he was, just about when he looked at the pictures that we had. And I don't recall any other attempts. I think that security thing, that security arrangement that we have, patients know it. I think it's, anytime there's been, say, a question about, if there has been an altercation or something, we can go back and we can look at the video, and patients find out about that, you know, that this is, this is a place that we take very seriously. We want you to, we're here for recovery, we want you to come for your treatment, come for your counseling and the medication that we offer, but when you're done, we want you to leave, and we don't want to have any hanky-panky or things that would be tempting to dealers or other people that would be tempted to do something like that. And the safe and the security are centrally located, it'd be very difficult for a person to get into the supply, because the safe would have to be open, the silent alarm would immediately be going to the police department, and I think before, before we would have an opportunity to open the safe and turn over a supply, the place would be surrounded, I think, by, by security, so.
And the DEA requires us to have an alarm on the safe if it's tripped, that basically initiates immediate action.
Okay.
And two, just to speak, you know, a lot of people think substance abuse users are as a violent population. Heroin addicts and opiate addicts in general are pretty mellow, kind of more on the artistic side. You know, we've been open since 1973, I think we've had one fistfight over a 30-plus-year period, so I think, you know, you're going to have a lot more incidence of violences in a general grocery store or things of that nature than you've had in our facility. Our patient population is very appreciative of our services, respect the facility, respect what we ask of them, because they know how critical it is for their life and putting their life back together, so they don't want to not only jeopardize the clinic for their sake, but also for friends and family members that they may have in treatment or anyone else suffering from the disease.
Yeah, I just want to say, I think there's a misperception about who the patients are. I just asked Dr. Stenson, his current patient load runs around 60% or more of patients who have been, had surgery or broken limbs or in car accidents, and they've been prescribed opiate painkillers, and they're addicted. So, you know, we're not, we're not, I think there's an image of the patients here are, you know, heroin addicts and things like that. They're not. They're mom and dad, and, you know, brothers and sisters and brother-in-laws and sister-in-laws, and, you know. I've known a number of folks, I've had family members that have, because of injury, falling down because they're elderly, get addicted to Vicodin or something like that, and, you know, it's difficult to cut them off when they're in pain. So just to change the image here, I want to present who the patients really are.
I would also like to just add, too, that one of the, one of the current methadone programs that is off of Norwood has maybe a very similar kind of freeway access in an industrial area, and to my knowledge, there has not been any issues there either with armed robberies, so.
Any additional questions, Commissioner Harrison?
Will you guys at least take into consideration the thought of kind of having an armed security guard? I mean, just...
You know, a lot of our patients have experience with law enforcement and have a negative connotation of law enforcement due to their interactions, so sometimes a gun just makes them nervous in general, or, you know, even people of authority can make them nervous in general. So since we haven't had any incidences in the past, we don't believe it's necessary, especially with such a, you know, a much smaller facility. We're going to be operating with, you know, a maximum caseload of 50% or less of our current facility, and again, have never had any major issues. Our security plan, which was reviewed by Chief McDonald and his staff, they were satisfied with, it's actually a more intense security plan than what we currently have at our current facility as far as key card access to the dispensary.
And not to interject, but we prefer those security plans stay secure. So you don't, do not feel the need to go into any additional detail than you already have on security plan, or else everyone will know all your security measures.
Yeah, but, thank you, you know, appreciate it. You know, I'm satisfied, thank you.
All right, Commissioner Boo?
Yes, it was a, I have a question that was shared by Commissioner Austin, I don't think it was addressed, but how did you arrive to the conclusion of, you know, placing this facility in West Sacramento? Considering it's, you know, on the far eastern side of the county, wouldn't it make more sense to have it more centralized in the county in a city like, you know, perhaps Woodland, which is pretty much in the center?
So we actually started this process in 2015, presented in front of the Woodland City Council, and after doing more extensive research and looking at our current patient population and patient populations at existing, the existing clinic that was mentioned off Norwood Boulevard in Sacramento, the highly concentrated numbers of patients were West Sacramento, we're currently treating 106 Yolo County residents, and 68 or 69 of those are actually West Sacramento residents, so that's why we decided to locate in West Sacramento. And then I believe Brian addressed the questions earlier about the location, the rest of it, but if you have, if you need any further clarification, let us know.
I just want to add real quick to that...
Can you introduce yourself?
Oh, sorry, Marshall, Marshall Stenson, I'm the business director, of course, is that Communicare, one of the, who we're partnering with on this grant, they have their main hub in Woodland, too. So this is, this kind of, this location in West Sac kind of allows equal, they have Davis, Woodland, and one in West Sac as well, but most of our patient load that's already on methadone is from West Sacramento, so that's why it makes the most sense. And I believe that most of the new patients that are going to come on under this grant will be given buprenorphine versus methadone, and that will allow us to route them back to their city of residence. And Woodland, they can do, Communicare can do their own intakes and that for the, for the buprenorphine program there, too.
Okay, thank you.
No, please, go ahead, we'll go back to Vice Chair Castillo.
Just to follow up, what's the average age of patients?
Currently, at our 800-patient facility, it's about 46 years old.
And then in terms of signage, I know I see in the picture of the one in Sacramento, there's no signage outdoors. Is there, are there any plans to include any signage, I may have it for not, but are there any plans to include any signage at the facility?
No, not at, not at this time. Again, due to the stigma surrounding substance abuse treatment, we kind of try to hide in the woods, so to speak, and make our neighbors, as Angela testimony gave, to almost like we're not there.
So unless there's any other immediate questions for the applicant, I'd like to give them the opportunity to sit down and catch their breath and bring the discussion back to the commission.
Thank you very much.
So if anyone has any items they'd like to discuss at the commission level, I'm happy to entertain those, I have a few comments at the end, but I want to open it up to others first.
Sure, I'll go ahead and start, so bear with me. So, fun fact, my first job out of college was working in an outpatient substance abuse center, not a methadone clinic, but it was mostly a counseling center. So I just want to make sure that as we have these discussions, particularly in a public forum, I really appreciate what the applicant was, the representatives from the applicant were saying about the stereotypes, and really, it takes an incredible amount of bravery to come forward when you have a, when you have an addiction issue. And so I just want to make sure that I, that the comments I make or that other people make should not be, and shouldn't be, and shouldn't be seen as stigmatizing or shaming folks who are dealing with opioid addiction and abuse. That being said, one of the pieces that we are charged with when we entertain this, apparently on February 15th, is, in considering the use permit, is this desirable for our community? And that really, that is really a valid thing that we need to consider as a planning commission. So, a couple of things that I weigh. One is, what is the quality of the applicant? And it's something that I bring up fairly often, we've brought, I have personally brought this up with cannabis applicants and other, and other applicants, they don't always have to be drug-related. But really, the quality of your, of your operation is really important, and I think that something that was incredibly powerful was hearing from Ms. Tillitson. I think that was really excellent public comment that you gave, and I think it spoke volumes to the type of operation that you are doing. That being said, I still do know that other operators, that they aren't well-run facilities, that there is loitering, and I do worry that we have much less frequent bus service than you would have in midtown, so people will be loitering because they are waiting. So that is one concern. Another concern for me, and, you know, I think it's probably clear from my line of questioning, has nothing to do with the applicant. It has everything to do with, a big reason that our city was incorporated was because we essentially were, for lack of a better term, a dumping ground for the county of undesirable activities and undesirable uses. And that, I'm very, very sensitive to anything that can be seen as a continuation of that, and this on its surface really can appear that way, that if there isn't another community within Yolo County, and again, I want to stress, it doesn't have to be in an incorporated city, you could possibly find a space in unincorporated Yolo County that may be able to serve this same purpose, but that, well, because one thing I'm hearing is, well, this will be really convenient for people who are in the prison work-release program. And again, I don't want to stereotype, but I do want to acknowledge that this is now essentially two nearby uses that are not necessarily desirable for our entire community, not just our residents and their families that are dealing with substance abuse addiction. So I am, I am conflicted about this application, but I, I feel really good about a high-qualified, a highly qualified applicant that has been successfully operating a similar, a similar facility. So those are some of my comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Austin.
You don't, you don't, you don't have to comment, but I just want to make sure. No, well, I appreciate, again, the background information and educating us, at least myself a little bit about this particular facility and the kind of services you guys will provide. You know, I think one of the things that I'm most interested in learning more about is the traffic flow and the parking situation, but it gives me a bit of comfort that this is not a new business, and so this is something that's already happening in Sacramento, and the caseload is much larger than what you guys anticipate it will be in West Sacramento. And it, there doesn't seem to be any problems over there in terms of the traffic, not traffic, parking situation, but I, in terms of, I guess, one of the things that I'd like to see is some kind of traffic flow analysis, and because in the report, it indicates that a lot of people will come through Enterprise and turn left, and then make an illegal U-turn to get to the facility on Industrial. So I'd be curious to see if the staff and the applicant can come up with some kind of, you know, solution so that won't occur, because I think that's, if there is going to be one entrance to the facility, there needs to be a way for individuals to be able to get to Enterprise, or I'm sorry, Industrial through Enterprise without having to make an illegal U-turn, or drive one mile up, I don't know how far, and then come back. So I'd like to see that fleshed out a little bit more as it relates to this application, so.
Thank you, Vice Chair Castillo. Is there any comments?
I'll keep it brief, I mostly second Commissioner Austin's comments. The one thing I'm weighing on here is, you know, we cannot deal with opiate addiction without treatment.
Right.
We need it. It's a service that is necessary within our county, so I'm focused on placement and... Um, so I'm, I'm focused on placement, um, and making sure it's the right fit for our community.
Uh, so just a, a few, uh, kind of concluding comments, summing, trying to sum up what I think everyone shared, uh, and I appreciate the good dialogue, uh, up here. And thank you both for the applicant and for the members of the public and, uh, for the Deputy Chief Strange for coming out and sharing your comments as well. Um, a few things to ring true. Obviously, we have a traffic pattern issue and a parking issue that, um, our, I think our hope with the continuance is that city staff will continue to work with the applicant to figure those out and come back to us on the fifteenth with a, a better plan, more information and hopefully a recommendation on how to solve those issues or, or consensus on how to solve those issues. Uh, Mr. Tilly, you're welcome to chime in if you'd like.
Yes, no, those are the things that are already in the works. Um, we made a lot of headway on that since Staff Report was published, um, last Friday, but we weren't quite ready for tonight.
And I think I also understood from Ms. Allen's presentation that there is a request from the county to get some additional information on, uh, the opioid epidemic in the county. And if, but if there's not, I would like to ask at least that we re, there, we have a com, we reach out to the county, because I know they have public health data on this issue in particular and the impacts in Yolo County. I think that data would be helpful for us to, for the commission to have if it's possible to get by the fifteenth. Um, I would have one other ask and that is if city staff could reach out to, um, the other major cities in the county to see if any of them have applications before them or, or projects in the works for a, of a treatment facility anywhere else by another, because obviously this isn't the only game in town. I just, I would like to have a holistic view of, of this, you know, our role in, in helping serve the county and what else is happening in the county as well. Um, that said, I, I do want to, um, share, share kind of my feelings and comments on this. Uh, largely agree with, with most of the commission that, um, this is a treatment facility for folks who need help, uh, recovering from an addiction. Uh, and, you know, we often are, as a society, can be very critical of folks who are either incarcerated or have drug problems or struggle with addiction or alcoholism. Um, but when it comes to finding time to solution, we always want to say, oh no, someone else is to deal with.
Mm-huh.
Um, that, that can go somewhere else. Uh, and in this community, I think we've, we've taken a pretty strong stance on being the folks who are going to stand up for doing what's right in the long run and not just the short run. And so for me, uh, I, my wife is also a pub, in public health. And so we talk about things like this all the time. And I understand that the crisis that's happening, not just in the country, but specifically in Yolo County, we have, we have a, we have a county crisis with the opioid epidemic. It's real. Um, and we have limited service providers to help solve that problem. Um, so to me, this is an, this is an opportunity to help folks, not just in West Sacramento, but in our county, um, have access to services that, you know, absent other solutions or other applicants out there in other cities, will not have an option to provide treatment to. Um, so in total, I have a lot of respect both for the applicant, for their track record and their history, but also for the need and for, uh, you know, my personal opinion is this is an area where we should be stepping up and leading on, uh, and not, not backing away from. That said, I do understand and appreciate some of the concerns from the members and additional issues regarding parking, um, security, uh, and, and some of those things. I, uh, you know, on the commission level, we typically put a lot of faith in the, the police department in reviewing security plans and coming back to us with a favorable recommendation, uh, on their analysis and review. Uh, so we'll look for a, an additional thumbs up on that as we move forward, although it sounds like you've already completed that work and are comfortable. Um, but with that said, I know the final recommendation on this item is that we're going to continue it to the fifteenth to give everyone a little more time to work and get all our ducks in a row and all our data presented for us. And I look forward to having this conversation back to us then, uh, so we can make a decision as a group. But I do appreciate the good dialogue that's taken place tonight. Unless anyone has any comments, I would like to see if anyone's willing to make a motion to continue the item to the fifteenth per staff's recommend, updated recommendation.
I'll move to continue the item to the February fifteenth, uh, meeting.
Thank you. So moved by Vice Chair Castillo. Do we have a second?
Second.
Very good. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right. And we did keep the public hearing open for this, so that a public hearing can continue at the second meeting.
Thank you, commissioners. Great questions. Thank you.
And with that, that does include all the items on our, uh, regular agenda. We will move to item A under the general administration function, informal discussion.
Um, I have one item. Um, I will be arranging a planning commissioner training workshop sometime this year. You can thank Chair Sternfelds for passing that baton to me. Um, so we'll be looking sometime around June, uh, and I'll have more details on that, but just, uh, just know that it's coming and I would hopefully like to see friendly faces there, so.
Well, on that same note, then I'll chime in. Did West Sacramento get acknowledged? I unfortunately was not able to attend the APA event, but Mr. Tilly?
Yes, um, I should have mentioned this earlier. Um, I had the pleasure of accepting an award from our, um, local APA section, um, the, for our general plan work on behalf of, um, staff past and present who worked on that, planning commissioners, past and present, and city council on that. We received an award of merit for comprehensive planning for a small jurisdiction. So, um, was very, very pleased to get that. Um, and a lot of work went into that, obviously for, with the commission as well. And so, uh, we do have a nice plaque that's, um, available if anyone wishes to go view it.
Just, uh, very quickly, I would echo, uh, that the training put out that Russ is, Commissioner Levy is speaking of in regarding to the APA regional chapter is fantastic. And for those of us who are newer commissioners, it'd be an excellent opportunity to not just learn, uh, from some local experts, but also meet other commissioners in the region. So I will, I'll give you at least a plug for helping. Any other informal discussion? I do want to just again, thank Commissioner Austin for her service last year and I look forward to working with all of you in the coming year. And unless anyone has anything else, I'll be happy to accept a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved.